Okay, good morning, everybody. Thank you for dialing in. Let's get started. We'll do the call to order. Phil, if you could take role.
President McFarland?
Here.
Vice President Singer?
Here.
Secretary Rousch is here. Treasurer Perdell? Not here. Member Baker?
Mary's here. I can't hear her, though.
She needs to unmute herself.
I think she's muted.
I'm here.
There she is.
And she has a sweet microphone.
Yeah, look at that.
Member Baker?
No. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, Member Blasey?
Here.
And Member Lauterbach?
Here.
All right, all seven.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into item number two, request to address the board. There are none that I'm aware of, and there's nobody here. So moving into 3.1. Mike, COVID update.
So that was the original topic. You were called. Now we're very ready for our continuity learning plan as well. So I'll give you what I tend to do on general updates. And so we've been working through not only the continuity of learning plan and trying to be very proactive in getting out there early, start the training for the kids as early as possible and move forward. Technically, it's not April 28th.
Hey, Mike, it's really hard to hear you. You're echoing for some reason.
Yeah, we're not able to fix that right now. We got a little mic feedback, so.
All right.
We're gonna have to bear with it. Something in here. Yeah. So April 28th is the actual due date of the plan to MDE. So we'll be one of the first ones out. And with that, we expect a more flexible plan that is required as we go forward, and we expect to make amendments and learn from the plan as we go forward. The other issues that we're dealing with besides the actual learning, which Penny will go into in a little bit detail for you, as well as we're pushing heavily on the social emotional learning portion of that. Without those issues and certainly what's going on in society in our homes right now, we're concerned about that. Without fixing that, we're not going to be able to go forward. The other parts, the whole COVID crisis has caused us, you know, employees and dealing with the employee side of it, it would be the second portion, I guess, behind students. And so we have solely worked through some of those issues. Pretty much the government there with their executive order says all MPS employees will be paid, some contract employees not needed necessarily. And so we've worked through some of those, but we still have a few work left to do. Everyone is getting paid or will be paid. But what does that mean? And how do we find meaningful work to keep them safe through the stay-at-home order? And then once the stay-at-home order is lifted, what does that mean? And how do we do work going forward from there? We have lots of ideas. We think we can pretty much make meaningful work of the parents because of their size. And traditionally, they're involved because the students are in the building. With them not being in the building, their meaningful work may be hit and miss here and there, but not all the time. And so Kyle's worked through some legal stuff on how to, if you weren't compliant with the Constitution, which says you do not pay people to stay at home and not do work. So we think we're kind of ready for that portion as well going forward. And some of the other things, of course, that our parents and kids are concerned about, prom, a decision was made and released last evening to the students and parents that we will not have a formal prom this year. Graduation, it seems like the feedback's pretty overwhelming to delay, and so we'll probably delay and see where we, if that's possible, depending on the health crisis and where it's at come the summer, if we can hold the graduation. And the venue of that still could be different, too. Jeff Jaster's working with the loons. Of course, they don't really know where they even stand at this point. And so a lot of that will be in the working going forward. So before we move on to continuity of learning, I take any questions from you guys.
Sorry. What kind of meaningful work are you thinking about for the Paris?
We're making adjustments to try to prevent your feedback. Any better for you?
Keep talking.
So Pam, what was your question again?
So what are your ideas of meaningful work for the Paris?
So that's gonna be a difficult one, as I said, with 190 kids out there and so, or employees out there. But we've had principals.
Hey, Mike, I wonder if Scott mutes his, if you'll sound better.
Mine's not on, Pam.
Oh, all right. I don't see the little mute button showing up. All right, sorry, Mike.
All right, let's try this again. So Paris, there's 180, 190, I think. Kyle, you could weigh in if you want. I think that's about the right number of Paris we have, right?
Correct, yeah, about 197 on the books right now, including substitute Paris.
So it's a difficult group, and of course, they perform tasks anywhere from one-on-one aid for special needs students to office professionals to lunch aids. And so that's gonna be a difficult one. So we will run that and work that through each building. So once we're, each building principal's looking at meaningful work list, Jeff's collecting those right now, we will go through those and determine what can be done with the stay-at-home order. Then the meaningful list after the stay-at-home order, which we have a feeling it's April 30. She announced today, if you haven't seen that, she, I think Brian and I were in a meeting town hall with her, and she alluded to April 30. She wouldn't say for sure. Her first one, it could, she also said it could be a second, another one to extend if needed. And so then this meaningful work is a little different when we can actually bring them in safely into the building to do some work. But it's gonna be things like following up with kids in their homes on their wellness. Some of the special ed Paris will be able to work with IEPs and the teachers on that. But there will be some that we'll probably find very little meaningful work for them until at least the stay-at-home orders lifted.
Well, you throw that out to the teachers, maybe they could come up with some help that would help them with what they're doing.
We have, that's what the principals are doing on all those components. But they, when you say that, Pam, they also don't know all of the regulations and rules that we have to have. So that's, the final decision, I will do that, will come through HR and ourselves because of the health and safety concerns and those who can have leave time for all those pieces of that. So that'll have to flow all through here.
Great, thanks. Hey, you sound a lot better, too.
Yeah, Dave, I think Dave found the cure. All right, with no other further questions, let's go on to the big one of the day, and we're gonna bring Penny up and on because she wants to explain the continuity of learning plan. And while she's getting booted here to show her screen, I'm gonna tell you that, like I said earlier, Penny has done a tremendous job of leading this group. We've gotten feedback from not only our teacher leaders, but our teachers' association, our curriculum departments worked very hard on it, special education. Pretty proud of where the plan is right now, knowing that it's still gonna need some amendments as we go forward. Our plan is to release this today if all goes well. We will start, do a soft start next Monday. When we say soft start, we know that it may take the week for the teachers to connect with the students and the parents and get everyone aligned on the same page. But certainly by the next week, on the 20th, we'll think we'll be full steam ahead, knowing that this cannot replace traditional instruction face-to-face. But we're going to do our very best. With that, Penny, you can present the plan.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. And can you see my screen okay? Yes. Great. We are really proud of this plan. As Mike said, it really was truly a collaborative effort and one of maybe the most inspiring moments of certainly my career, seeing how teacher leaders, our association partners, all of our school administrators, central office staff, really all hands on deck to get our best thinking documented. And again, as Mike said, we know this will need some adjustments as we launch this and we receive feedback, but we really believe this is a great starting point. I want to note that the document represents, as I said, our best intentions to support all of our students during this time. It also meets the requirements of the state. So there are components in here that, as you read through it, you might wonder why we listed those. Some of them are the requirements of the Michigan Department of Education. You know, we know we have amazing teachers and support staff, and so we really wanted to find this balance throughout the plan of enough consistency, strong guidelines and support, but also ensure that our teachers could really be creative and innovative and do the best work that we know that they can. So I hope that as you read through this and as we talk through it today, that you felt that balance of strong guidance and support with teacher autonomy. Again, the overarching premise here is that we are moving from what we have been doing, which was enrichment and connection activities, and that we are now guiding students, support staff, teacher, or I'm sorry, students and families into this space of continuity of learning. New content can be delivered, higher expectations for students, and that is how the plan shall read. I think we were all really proud of how we came together as a school community when this first hit us, and we really focused on care and support for students and families. We immediately began figuring out how to get food and other necessities out to them. We shared a great deal of information about well-being and really thought about the safety and security of our students and families. And I want everyone to know that that focus is still very intentional. It is just now coming alongside the greater academic expectations. So again, I hope you see a recurring theme that above all, we want to continue to care for the social emotional well-being of our students. The development of the plan really centered around students. And again, I hope you see and feel that language. Students were our primary concern with all of the decisions we made. Then certainly families, knowing that we are asking parents, guardians, caregivers, family members to be more of a partner than maybe they ever have been before in the education of our students. And then, of course, we wanted to make a plan that was, would meet the needs of our teachers, knowing that they are now the sole interface with kids for the most part. I will be scrolling, so if that troubles your eyes, I'll try to give you a warning when I do that so that you can look away. In the opening page, I'll highlight for you these four key outcomes. Again, we want to emphasize care, safety, health, and overall well-being. We want to ensure the continuity of essential learning throughout the year. We've really asked teachers to think about those most essential concepts, big ideas, standards, learning targets, and organize their learning experiences around those. We want to provide a consistent, meaningful, engaging experience that promotes learning and growth. And this last bullet, which I fully support, and this language was very explicit in the executive order, that we need to provide the most equitable and accessible learning experience possible for all of our students.
Penny?
Yes.
We are only seeing the very front of the document at this point. It didn't move that off.
Thank you for that guidance. Please continue to guide me. It reads a little bit different on my screen. Can you see the section titled Roles and Responsibilities?
No, Penny, we're seeing the very first one, the title only.
Okay. It might be because I've increased the size of the document per Dave's recommendation, so I can condense that a bit. I know you all have a copy of this, so maybe just the visual sections on the screen is enough. And I know you have a copy at home that you can take a look at. So again, consistency is an important factor in this. We received some feedback through these first three weeks of our experience where it was more enrichment and connection. Just pointing out to us where we could tighten up communication, teacher to student and family. With, for example, a middle school student having a six-hour day, parents were receiving multiple emails at multiple times. They weren't really certain when students should connect with the teacher because it was meant to be connection and enrichment. So you'll see throughout this plan that we've really tried to create more of a schedule, more of a consistent expectation of when students should be engaged in learning and when teachers will be there to support them. The Roles and Responsibilities section, I'll just skim through quickly. It's important to note that we listed all of our certified staff and tried to note exactly what the expectations were, with care and concern being the first bullet of all of those. And again, I'm just gonna scroll through these. We provided a bit more guidance for teachers, knowing that they are the primary interface with students and families right now. This section I'll spend a moment on, if everyone can see the title, Methods for Remote Learning, Student Learning and Time Recommendations.
So Penny, the screen's never moved on the very first page. So maybe you do need to minimize this and re-put it up.
All right. Sorry about that. Give me one second, and I will figure out what to do here.
David suggested maybe you have two copies open.
Nope. Let's try it again.
Ah, you've got it now.
All right. I will just leave it on my other screen then, so I will sort of be looking off to my other screen. I apologize for that. Methods for Remote Student Learning and Time Recommendations, I want to spend just a minute with you on this particular piece because this is where we really zone in on the idea that our primary model of teaching and learning right now will be online, but not fully online. We expect teachers to provide students with both online experiences as well as offline experiences. We're being mindful of screen time. We're being mindful, again, of well-being. For families that we've identified and will continue to identify who do not have access, digital access, connectivity, then we will absolutely provide a comparable educational experience in a fully offline format. That means we will mail packets of materials, we will have phone conversations, we will do whatever we can do to the extent possible to connect with every student during this time. And Jeff Jaster is currently working with principals to really identify those students and families who we haven't heard from maybe in the last three weeks and begin to problem-solve and collaborate so that we can make sure all of our students are connected. Again, there is certainly a thread of equity throughout this section and others where we're being really thoughtful about multiple attempts to engage students, but at the same time, really honoring that not all families might be in a space, not just because of connectivity, but for other factors. They might not be in a space where they can engage in learning right now. And the executive order was very clear that we are not to penalize students and families who are unable to engage, but we certainly want to encourage and support. The recommended appropriate timeframes seem to really be a nice balance. Teachers seemed very pleased that we were offering these guidelines. So I'll just let you take a look at that on your screen. But I want to assure you all that we are not asking students to spend a standard school day engaged in learning. We're really looking to find the right balance with enough academic press that will provide learning and growth, but not to the extent that we are causing undue stress and strain on students and families. So for example, at the high school level, we're really looking at 30 minutes a day per class period for a total, and we gave a range, knowing that there might need to be some flexibility. Feedback so far indicates, again, that we've hit the mark with this, but we'll see as we launch this next week. Just for the sake of showing you that we have put some detail to this, this is the elementary school section. We have listed priorities. We have reaffirmed the timeframes, and we have a comparable section for middle school and high school, right down to the fact that we have detailed out when we hope our encore specials classes will launch some of their activities. We're really trying to provide a balanced learning experience for students, although in elementary, we have asked teachers to really focus primarily on literacy and math, again, knowing that literacy certainly can encompass science and social studies, as well as math and encore areas. I'm going to scroll quite quickly past the middle school and high school sections and just share with you a couple other highlights. We have been thoughtful about assessing student learning and grading. I'm sure you've read, as Mike has communicated very broadly, that all state assessments have been canceled for this year, which includes any of those considerations around the Read by Grade III law. IB and AP have released pretty clear guidance about how students can move forward there, and we will continue to support our IB and AP students. This is really, this section is really more about our internal practices and how we are issuing grades and monitoring student learning and providing feedback. Jeff Jaster led this component of the plan and brought a team together with Mike's leadership. There was a decision to offer only an opportunity for pass or incomplete. And the incomplete means that you have another opportunity after June 11th, the last day of school. We will connect with those students, identify what their needs are, and engage them to the extent possible in ongoing learning. And that's yet to be determined, so I won't share too much more, but we certainly have a high interest in making sure that when the next school year starts, to the extent possible, that students are ready to go.
Okay, what'd you say that was again?
Pardon me? Pam, I can't hear you. You're muted.
There you go. It's not pass or fail, it's, what were the words you used?
Yes, it's pass or incomplete.
Or incomplete, okay.
And Jeff, feel free to jump in here if you feel I'm not explaining this well. Again, the intent was that we want to provide every opportunity. The executive order, again, was very clear that we are not to penalize students who can't engage. And even those that can engage might not be able to have that same kind of consistency and intensity that we might need them to have. So we want to make sure there's every opportunity. So on June 11th, if a student receives an incomplete, they will have an additional opportunity to complete the assignments, meet the standards and expectations to earn the grade of pass, if you will, which will equate to credit in high school. A pass will equate to that credit. Does that clear it up for you, Pam?
Yeah, it does. If I have questions, should I wait till the end, or should I ask during?
How about if we just go section by section? I'm fine with questions based on the section we're at, and then at the end, we can gather up all the remaining questions. How's that?
Okay, great, thanks.
I'm gonna scroll rather quickly just to show you that we do have a section specific to navigating the remote learning classroom. We know this is a new space for many of our teachers and many of our students, so we provided as much detail as we could, including tips and tricks. We know that Zoom will be our primary platform for a live interface, and we have offered multiple opportunities for staff to have learning experiences. Melissa Toner and Dave Dietzick have really been just terrific. We have built out an entire Google Shared Team Drive that has multiple folders. Almost every digital tool that a teacher could use has written directions and video tutorials, and the tech team has really been working hard to support teachers and getting ready for this experience. Again, I'm going to just scroll through so you can see some of these components. There is also a section of navigating the remote learning classroom, which is for students and families. Again, these are some guidelines. We certainly want students to know that all of our policies and practices are still enforced and that we want them to reconvene in their school learning communities, and those expectations and norms persist. Daily routines, just again, some tips here of how we can get students and families to acclimate. You should see on your screen now an Additional Services section. This just details, well, I shouldn't say detail, it really doesn't detail. It provides a high-level overview of key components for the additional services and supports that we will be providing, and links and resource, contact people if families need more information. For example, special education, Mike can speak to this best, but really, we are, to the extent possible, continuing to support students with any accommodations that are required in an IEP. And the special ed team has really worked well to make meaning of that for those who will be doing that work. They know what the documentation expectations are. We have shared multiple tools that can be used in a digital interface to try to provide accommodations to the extent possible for our special education students. Mike, is there anything else you would want to say about that section in particular?
Well, we know there's flexibility here, and the intent is to provide the service, not to get caught up in the regulations and the paperwork that often comes with special ed. So they've ruled there's no reason to reconvene an IEP despite the fact that we're delivering instruction in a different way. So this is gonna go much easier than I think we originally had thought.
Great. Students receiving services through a 504, our students receiving English Language Learner supports are all, again, in that same vein of, to the extent possible, we will work to meet their needs. I do want to draw your attention to the mental health support section. We had this here before we even knew it would be a requirement, but I am pleased that in the executive order, it did require us to tend to mental health services. Many of you know that here in our Midland community, we have had a focus on youth mental health for some time, and so it made it much easier for us to just reference the existing systems and partnerships that we have. The three that we have listed, Partners in Change, Family and Children's Services, and the Community Mental Health, again, are existing partnerships. So we are continuing, to the extent possible, to provide teletherapy for students who were previously identified or will be identified by staff during this period. And we are certainly encouraging folks to use the 211 Hope Portal to identify other supports. And as you all know, we'll continue to provide meals and try to meet the needs of our students to the extent possible. The Communications Plan section just really emphasizes how important it is to continue the two-way communication that I think we're known for here in Midland Public Schools, and maybe even to take that to the next level. So it has chunked out ways in which the superintendent will certainly communicate, the principals will communicate to staff, principals to families, and then, again, maybe most critically during this time, how teachers and students and families will have two-way communication. We are really going to rely on teachers and support staff to get feedback from students about what's working and what's not, and that is the primary mechanism by which we will know how to make adjustments to the plan. As we near the end, I'll share that we do intend to continue providing professional learning. Again, Melissa Toner has made an entire three-hour self-paced, yet supported, learning experience for teachers who are new to a digital platform, to online or blended learning, with all of the evidence-based practices that is available, as well as multiple small group and one-on-one supports. And that's what we've been doing a lot this week, and anticipate we will next week, too, as teachers begin to engage in this next level expectation. As I noted, it was an extremely collaborative effort. The state does require us to continually monitor the success of the plan and make adjustments, as we've said before. So we will rely on feedback and encourage folks to share that with Mike, myself, or building principals. We will be gathering that hopefully on a weekly basis and discuss. principals. We will be gathering that, hopefully on a weekly basis, and discussing that as a leadership team, and modifying the plan as frequently as needed. There are no limitations on how frequently you can modify your official plan. I believe we already talked about the human resource pieces, so I'll just end there and ask if there are any questions.
I have one question, Penny.
Sure.
You talked about, we've got the pass or incomplete, but is, what's the expectation for the different point level classes in the high school? Point two, point three, point four, and expectations?
That's a great question, Pam. Because our focus is on lifting up just what those essential learnings are between now and June 11th, and really asking teachers to organize their learning experiences around that, I think the concerns about point levels really fell away. When you really think about students as a whole and what they need right now, it is so much more universal, universally yet also individualized, right? We do need to honor that every student and every family may have a unique need, but when it comes to what those core expectations are, and we conferred with teacher leaders and teachers, and it just really didn't come up as a consideration. Teachers are pressing forward to the extent possible, maintaining the high academic standards, but with also that high level of care. So as that translates to grading, which I think was your specific question, we suspect that we will have some students and families who may be displeased with the idea that they're not being issued a letter grade and the impact that may have on a grade point average. I still stand by that pass incomplete is the most equitable way forward.
Yeah.
With multiple opportunities to change an incomplete. Frankly, and Mike, you can chime in here, I've not heard of another school district who really is maintaining a strong focus on grades.
No, and it was pretty clear.
Feedback to me is the most important part right now. Teachers assessing students and providing high-quality feedback that moves learning forward is what's going to motivate and inspire students anyhow.
And it was pretty clear in the governor's executive order what her intent was, and certainly also the guidance that we received for your plans to be approved, that grades, not moving kids forward, not getting credit, you know, punishment or a decrease of a grade were not things that they wanted to see.
Online classes, will you still get grades for online classes?
Ah, meaning the students who are currently engaged in paths or who are accessing online learning through our electronic learning facilitator sections. Jeff, I might need you to chime in here. I'm embarrassed to say I'm not sure I know that layer of detail. I'm assuming it will also be a pass incomplete?
Yeah, the final grade, we are assuming that that's still the system that we're going to use. Right now, though, the vendors that we use to provide online learning and the software that accompanies those courses, we have a little less control over what it looks like, so parents may still see points and actual grades for an assignment, but in the end, what would be reported on a transcript or report card, I guess, would look more like the pass incomplete that Penny's already described.
We will remain consistent across the board with the exception seniors of being slightly different.
Yes.
So how does that work with seniors? Are they just graduating without anything, or?
So the executive order stated that their grade couldn't be harmed after March 11. So the grade that they had earned, and we've interpreted that to mean March 13th, because we technically had some assignments still coming in, that's their grade, and then they'll be given an opportunity to continue this work and expected to do this work, and they can improve their grade from there as well.
Oh, so they can improve a grade?
Yes.
After March 13th? Only seniors, so?
Seniors aren't exempt to this. The executive order clearly stated that.
Okay. And then SAT, is there an opportunity for our 11th graders to take SAT?
In the fall, next year, the executive order said that they would provide opportunities in the fall.
Does that mean it would be paid for by the schools again?
Appears to be. PSAT and SAT in the fall. We have not received that clearly yet.
Hi, Penny.
Hi, Mary.
Hi. I just wanted to say that I thought this was an amazingly thorough and detailed plan. You could tell that you guys worked very hard on this. I love the Week at a Glance opportunity for teachers to provide written and verbal for what was planned for the week and specific what to do, what we would like you to see each student to accomplish, guidelines for parents, just really, really thoughtful. My question, one question that I did have was regarding the tech ed people, the kids that are in welding or in building trades. How does that work out?
Thanks for pointing that out. It is probably our most challenging area right now. Steve Poole, as the curriculum specialist for that area, has been in touch with our CTE teachers, working hard to figure out exactly what can you do. There are resources out there, welding videos, auto tech videos, but you can only watch so many videos and write a reflection or analysis, right? So I think we're all acknowledging that some of our courses are going to be more challenging, and students won't have the kind of resources at home, and certainly, there's no way that we could provide that layer of resource. So we're going to do the best we can. We will communicate, those teachers will communicate specifically to those students and parents and let them know, really, it might be a little bit less of an expectation for a few of those areas. And then, part of the executive order that spoke to post-secondary education and the Career and Technical Education Act is that we have an opportunity, if not actually an obligation, to make sure that we're partnering to get student certification, if their program was designed to earn a certification or be prepared to take a certification test. So Steve has been in touch with our CTE consortium, with our post-secondary partners. We certainly will do right by kids to the extent possible in making sure that they have a complete experience. I wanted to say thank you for noting that Week at a Glance, I should have mentioned that as a key communication tool. We are still challenged by the idea that parents will receive many, many communications, and that can be tough if you have multiple students at home and you are already trying to navigate that, as well as maybe do your own job. So this Week at a Glance is meant to be a helpful tool. Dave and the curriculum team have been working on a companion solution to that, a way to maybe just have one email or visiting a website, and you can identify it that way, rather than a teacher, or excuse me, rather than a parent or family member receiving multiple, multiple emails. So stay tuned for more on that. We hope to launch that yet next week.
Well, I thought even the detail of, like, at the high school level, if you have a first hour, office hours for your first hour teacher, and office hours for when it's easiest to get in touch with them, and when the virtual classroom time is, was just very, very thoughtful because otherwise, you don't know, you know, I need to talk to this teacher. And I think, Pam, that might address some of your concerns, too. Kids that are at a particular point level, I think what teachers probably are looking for is for them to give their best effort and to try, they're going to have to be advocates for themselves to learn what they can learn, where they may never have had to do that before. So, you know, in some respects, it's going to be a good thing for some kids to learn that they have to be their advocate.
That partnership, Mary, of teacher, student, parent, is probably bigger than it's ever been. It's probably shifted a little more to student, parent, for sure.
Are there other questions that Jeff or I can answer?
You guys did a fabulous job. I was thoroughly impressed when I read through this, and I think it's a wonderful plan. It's easy to read. It's easy to understand, and it makes sense. So thanks for all you did to put this together.
Thanks so much. It was certainly a team effort.
So with that, if there's no other questions on the continuity learning plan? So the only other thing, oh, I see Brad. Go ahead, Brad. You? No?
Nope.
All right, shift it to you when you move your desk. It picks up any noise, and then we'll shift to you. Sorry about that. So another thing I would add, that Brian and I've said in a lot of meetings about what is the fallout of COVID-19 and the financial picture, and that's kind of unclear, but we do know that we were originally told, and I believe legislators gave themselves, some legislations, said they would have a budget by June 30, unlike last year where we got it late, but that is not going to occur. They've told us that it's impossible. August 30 would be the very earliest, and most likely, again, you'd be pushing October 1. We've heard flat, maybe even to the negative, budget coming forward, and certainly, the next year's budget will be hindered, so plan accordingly. And so, you know, we're luckily, we're in that good financial position. And so, we've kind of been trying to figure out what do we do internally? Do we change things in this budget or plan? I don't necessarily think so. I think as we go forward in the next few years, we may begin to look at, do we need to get a little skinnier just to weather the downtime? Because I'm sure some of you guys who are business people are doing, businesses are going to do as well, hoping this comes back, but, you know, begin to figure out how to get a little skinnier to weather this thing out. So that, part of that plays into the April 20 board meeting, because we want to bring you that energy bonding concept that brings the LED lighting into the district. That payoff would allow us to update the HVAC that serves this building, the administration center, because State Street, right now, it sits in State Street, and that has to be separated before State Street comes down under the bond. And so one of the ways we were looking at was that creative financing, and FFO has looked at it already, and we're going to have the gentleman present to you that on the 20th as well. So we'll make our decision from there, what you guys think about that going forward. So instead of just killing it, we'll bring it forward. I had some conversations with foundations and Mr. Schudy on the Dow High, not shoring where that was going to go, and it appears that's going to continue to go forward. So we'll see if those funds come in in early May, as we expect it. Free to take order on that. We have spoken to our construction manager, architect. We have actually, a few minutes here from now, Brian and I will be going into a meeting with them. We're continuing forward on planning and projecting behind the scene, but as you may know, contractors are not allowed to move forward right now. So the projects that we had pulled early are sitting there kind of empty, not going on right now. Now that we know no athletics, if the contractors stay at home, get lifted, we would like to pull the stadium ahead and get it done early. But we also need to do that second half of that air handling unit at Dow High, and that's a concern if we want to do some August remediation, and so we're going to have to figure that one out. Do we delay it a whole another summer, or do we go and see if they can pull it ahead with the May, if they're lifted in May, and still hit an early August deadline for us? So a little bit of work in progress on construction as well. So a lot of unknowns, still a little bit of anxiety, but we're ready to move forward and do the best we can. So if you don't have further questions, that's what we have for you today, and then we'll see you again on April 20, and I'll try to keep you up to date at the best we can. Certainly send your questions our way.
Hey, Mike, I'm thinking for our board meeting, too, if Scott's computer is right in front of him, we don't see his face. It's just way far away. If we could have someone else's computer do the faraway picture, just so when Scott talks, we can actually see him?
Yeah, it's not a problem. We were working the kinks out today, so behind the scene here, we had technical issues, so that's why we wanted to hold this one to work those kinks out.
Yeah, good idea.
Just one other couple points before we wrap it up here. I've been receiving a lot of questions, and I'm sure the other board members have as well, about what's going on with the district, talking about a lot of issues that we've discussed today. It's important that we direct those questions to Mike, so we don't have seven different responses from seven different board members going out in the community and kind of creating confusion and chaos. So I don't know if you guys are receiving questions. I'm getting a lot on social media, and so I try and direct those to Mike when I can. If they're very basic, and they're friends that you're family that you're talking to, you know, that's fine, but when you start getting media like Chemical City Paper, or maybe Midland Daily News reaching out to you, just be cognizant of what you say and try and direct it to Mike's office as much as possible.
Great. Hey, Mike, will this Zoom session be videotaped and put on MCTV?
So that was the feedback here we're getting back, Pam. We're tying both together right now. So those, Zoom was easy for us, because we've been Zooming for a long time for different things in the district, but right now, you have both going on. So that was a little bit what you had. You had Zoom audio and the TV audio interacting at the beginning of the meeting. So it was great. We were able to do this today and get those kinks out. But yes, we recorded them. As we said, we record all meetings going forward, if you remember that.
Sounds good. I'll make sure I comb my hair.
Yep.
Okay, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I so moved that. Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thanks, Scott.